All right, everybody. This is the closed session meeting, 5:00 PM for the City Council of the City of Arroyo Grande for Tuesday, September 26th. Can we get a roll call, please?
Councilmember Seacrest?
Here.
Councilmember George?
Here.
Councilmember Guthrie?
Here.
Mayor Ray Russum?
Here.
And Mayor Proton Barnish is absent.
Would you please join me in the flag salute?
Ready, begin. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
All right, as usual, I'm going to go to item five first and ask our city attorney to announce the closed session item for this evening.
Thank you, Mayor. For tonight's closed session, we have one item, conference with legal counsel, anticipated litigation, significant exposure to litigation pursuant to paragraph two of subdivision D of section 549, 56.91, potential case.
Thank you. And let's open up public comment on closed session items. And seeing no one in our chambers, I'll check in with the city clerk.
We do have one member on Zoom. If you would like to make a comment, please raise your hand. Okay, we have no raised hands and we have no written comment.
All right, so we will close public comment. That takes us to adjournment to closed session and we'll be back at 6:00 PM. All right, everyone. Welcome back to the council. It's our regular meeting for 6:00 PM. We've just come out of closed session. This is Tuesday, September 26th, 2023. Can we get a roll call, please?
Councilmember Seacrest?
Here.
Councilmember George?
Here.
Councilmember Guthrie?
Here.
Mayor Ray Russum?
Here.
And Mayor Proton Barnish is absent.
Would you please silently join me in a moment of reflection? Thank you. And would you please join me in the flag salute?
Ready, begin. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
All right, this takes us to item five, which is our agenda review. And I will turn it over to our city attorney to talk about closed session.
Thank you, Mayor, for the item that was read into the record at 5:00 PM for the closed session held this evening. There is no reportable action from that closed session.
Thank you. And does the council see any need to reorganize the agenda this evening?
No, thank you.
We will proceed as published. And item 5B, I will move that all ordinance presented at the meeting be read in title only and all further readings be waived.
Second.
We have motioned a second. Can we just do this by voice vote? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Aye. And any opposed? There are none, motion passes. Item six is special presentations. The first one is the Honorary Proclamation Recognizing Domestic Violence Awareness Month. And I would like to invite Jatseba Sandoval to meet me at the dais. This is probably not the dais, but welcome.
Hello.
Hi.
This is an honorary proclamation declaring October 2023 as Domestic Violence Awareness Month. Whereas Dating and Domestic Violence Awareness Month calls attention to the fact that intimate partner violence is widespread and impacts every person in Arroyo Grande. And whereas Lumina Alliance provides essential life-saving services for survivors, their children, and families throughout the San Luis Obispo County, including Arroyo Grande. Whereas domestic violence is a pattern of control in an intimate relationship where one person uses coercion and violence to gain power and control over his or her partner. And whereas domestic violence can result in physical injury, psychological trauma, and even death. The devastating consequences of domestic violence can cross generations and last a lifetime. And whereas there is a need to focus on the individualized needs of domestic violence survivors. Whereas the marginalization of certain groups in society, including undocumented individuals, transgender individuals, and those living with disabilities, increases their vulnerability to intimate partner violence. And whereas Lumina Alliance continues to provide a safe environment to those affected by domestic violence with crisis intervention, counseling, education, legal services, and emergency safe housing with the help of dedicated volunteers and professionals. And whereas Lumina Alliance has received over 2,000 calls to the crisis and information line, provided more than 6,000 collective nights for shelter clients, and provided more than 4,800 hours of therapy. And whereas Lumina Alliance serves as, quote, "a bright light during dark times," end quote, for survivors of intimate partner violence, illuminating a path towards safety and healing. Whereas the City of Arroyo Grande strongly supports the efforts of Lumina Alliance, how every segment of our society can work together to better address intimate partner violence and how to help survivors connect with services. And now therefore be it resolved that I, Karen Ray Russum, Mayor of the City of Arroyo Grande, do hereby declare October 2023 as Domestic Violence Awareness Month and recognize the important work done by domestic violence programs. Thank you so much. And we'd like to invite you to speak.
Yes.
Give me just a second.
Thank you for this proclamation. My name is Jatseba Sandoval, and I'm the Detention Facility Program Manager for Lumina Alliance. Lumina Alliance's mission is to empower those impacted by sexual and intimate partner violence through innovative advocacy, healing, prevention programs, and much more. Our agency, though we've changed our names, has supported survivors for over 40 years, and we continue to serve as that bright light during dark times for those in need. We offer a 24-hour crisis and information line, self-sufficiency planning, accompaniments, and advocacy, as well as providing three emergency shelters, transitional housing, individual and group therapy, and a robust prevention program. As previously mentioned, October is Dating and Domestic Violence Awareness Month. Domestic Violence Awareness Month, also known as DVAM, was launched in 1987 with the goal of uniting organizations and people working to end domestic and intimate partner violence across the country. Over 30 years, Domestic Violence Awareness Month continues to be a time of collaboration, advocacy, and connection with the goal of raising awareness of the impacts of domestic and intimate partner violence. This year's, in particular, we look to shine a light on the hidden cost of intimate partner violence in our community, as well as those groups whose survivorship often goes unacknowledged. While we recognize that intimate partner violence can be experienced by anyone, certain groups such as undocumented individuals, transgender individuals, and those living with disabilities are uniquely vulnerable to intimate and domestic violence. Despite this, these groups are often the least likely to have access to services they need to heal and thrive. And the violence they experience is often in the shadows. This October, we are committed to illuminating the path towards a brighter future for all survivors. In honor of DVAM, Lumina Alliance has planned several events throughout the month, including the Celebrate Community Festival and Walk for Survivors on Saturday, October 28th, in Mission Plaza in downtown San Luis Obispo. This is a family-friendly event, bringing us together and supporting support throughout the county to walk in celebration of our vision to create a safe, thriving, equitable community. Please visit celebratecommunityslow.org to register for this event and come visit our Slow Farmers Market booth on October 19th to learn more. Lumina Alliance will also be hosting two sessions of A Window Between Worlds, a transformative healing art program facilitated by Lumina Alliance staff. Finally, tune into KCBX this month to hear stories from local Spanish-speaking survivors about their experience with domestic violence and seeking help in our community. Please visit luminaalliance.org/divam to learn more about these events and how you can participate in DVAM. Please remember if anyone you know has experienced sexual or intimate partner violence and needs help, to please call our 805-545-8888 to speak to our confidential advocates. In closing, we are so grateful for this proclamation and for the ongoing support. On behalf of Lumina Alliance, boards, staff, volunteers, we thank you all for taking action this month to create a vision for a safe, thriving, and equitable community. Thank you.
Thank you. Would the council like to say anything? Checking in. Okay, and let's go ahead and open up public comments, see if anyone would like to speak on item 6A. And seeing no one in here, let's check in with the city clerk.
If any members of the public on Zoom would like to speak on this item, please raise your hand. There are no raised hands. And there are no written comments.
All right, so we'll close public comment and move on to item 6B. This is another honorary proclamation declaring Fire Prevention Week. And Chief, will you meet me up at the podium?
Hello, sir.
This is an honorary proclamation declaring October 8th through 14th, 2023, as Fire Prevention Week. Whereas the City of Arroyo Grande is committed to ensuring the safety and security of all those living in and visiting Arroyo Grande. And whereas fire is a serious public safety concern, both locally and nationally, and homes are the locations where people are at greatest risk from fire. And whereas home fires killed 2,800 people in the United States in 2021, according to the National Fire Prevention Association, and fire departments in the United States responded to 338,000 home fires. And whereas two of every five home fires start in the kitchen, with 31% of those fires resulting from unattended cooking. And whereas more than half of reported non-fatal home cooking fire injuries occurred when the victims tried to fight the fire themselves. And whereas children under five face a higher risk of non-fire burns associated with cooking than being burned in a cooking fire. And whereas residents who have planned and practiced a home fire escape plan are more prepared and will therefore be more likely to survive a fire. And whereas working smoke alarms cut the risk of dying in reported home fires in half. And whereas the Five Cities Fire Authority is dedicated to reducing the occurrence of home fires and home fire injuries through prevention and protection education. And whereas Arroyo Grande residents are responsive to public education measures and are able to take action to increase their safety from fire, especially in their homes. And whereas the 2023 Fire Prevention Week theme, Cooking Safety Starts With You, Pay Attention to Fire Prevention, effectively serves to remind us to stay alert and use caution when cooking to reduce the risk of kitchen fires. Now therefore be it resolved that I, Karen Ray Russum, Mayor of the City of Arroyo Grande, do hereby declare October 8th through 14th, 2023, as Fire Prevention Week throughout the city, and urge all the people of Arroyo Grande to check their kitchens for fire hazards and to use safe cooking practices during Fire Prevention Week 2023 and beyond. And to support the many public safety activities and efforts of our local fire department, the Five Cities Fire Authority.
Thank you so much.
Thank you, Chief, and I'm sure you're going to tell us more.
Mayor, council, staff, community, thank you so much for the proclamation. There's some pretty sobering statistics in the proclamation, and I won't dwell on those, but it is amazing. We're so distracted and we're so busy, and we still have to cook dinner for ourselves and our families. And really staying focused on what's going on in the kitchen is such a basic instinct, but it's really hard for us in our society today. So I appreciate this. We will be hosting Fire Prevention Week Open House on the 21st of October at Station One here in Arroyo Grande. Lots of demonstrations. We'll also be showing off the county's new fire safety trailer that has an earthquake simulator in it. It has a kitchen cooking safety simulator in it. And we're really excited, and more information will be coming forward as we get closer to that date.
What's the date again? Forget it.
October 21st.
Thank you.
At Station One. I also want to acknowledge my partners that are here this evening, supporting the proclamation. I've got both companies from Station One, and Chief Heath, who is now a shift-based battalion chief, so the entire station, which is pretty crowded these days, came to say hello as well. So thank you very much for the proclamation, and please come visit us on the 21st. Thank you.
Thank you, Chief. Would anyone like to come up and speak on this item? That was the official opening of public comment. I do have to say those words. And let's check in with the city clerk to see if there's anyone online.
If any members of the public on Zoom would like to make a comment, please raise your hand. There are no raised hands and there are no written comments.
Thank you. All right, we'll close public comment. Should have asked the council if they wanted to say anything.
I just wanted to tell Chief that I did check my fire extinguisher yesterday morning underneath my sink, because we needed it for something, so. No, it was good. It was all good. It's all good.
And I can tell you firsthand that if you leave coconut in the toaster for more than 90 seconds, bad things happen. And you almost got a call from me. And that is not a joke. So that is no joke, cooking fires. I'm a good cook, and I can make that mistake. Anybody can. All right, let us move on then to item 6C. This is our interim city manager communications. Mr. Robson?
Thank you, Mayor, and council members. I'm going to be quick. I've asked our city engineer to come and give an update to the council and the public. We have several, as you know, your council's been updated over the past months, but we have several projects going on in the city. And then we also have a confluence of projects going on in the village itself and very close to the village. So we want to continue to keep the council and the public updated on those. We've been doing mailers to the public, we're calling neighborhood groups. So we've been really increasing our effort on communication so that people will know what's going on, when things are taking place, how things may impact them and their businesses as well. So that's another effort here that we're going to have. Shannon Sweeney, again, our city engineer, will comment and give you an update on the calendar and the critical path that we're looking at.
Good evening, council. Happy to share our village construction project's timeline. I shared this at our last meeting, but there are some significant changes to it that I'd like to share with you. The first change is that the work that was scheduled for street repairs on Mason in Nevada that were scheduled for the week of September 11th were completed, and that's why they have fallen off this calendar. We were originally going to start the work on the concrete bands and the tree wells and the crosswalks on September 18th. We sat down at a pre-construction meeting with the contractor to make that happen, at which point the contractor asked, would it be okay if we did night work? The expression you gave was the expression we gave. After a very short deliberation amongst staff, we determined that there were so many reasons why night work would be so much more advantageous for this work that we agreed. So what we did was we did a little bit of a delay. So you see that the start of the schedule for that work is on October 8th. And the network presents some significant improvements in that we won't have the noise going on during daylight hours. We believe that because there's so much less traffic in the middle of the night that we don't have to do a detour, that we're going to try doing two-way flagged traffic through the village. We will allow on-street parking during daylight hours, and we think that the noise and dust will be far less impactful to those people who are coming and visiting in the village. So what you see is the night work is scheduled from the hours of 8:00 PM to 6:00 AM, Sunday night through Friday morning. And they'll begin with the south sidewalk pavers and tree wells, then they'll move over to the north side sidewalk pavers and tree wells. And during this entire time, they'll be working on those crosswalk repairs. The temporary parklets, security barriers, those K rails that are in the street right now, will be removed the evening of October 2nd and morning of October 3rd in preparation. And then you can see that Halloween is on the schedule, but because the work is scheduled for night, the Halloween will not be impacted. And then the east branch slurry is scheduled for the beginning of October, allowing for the project to be completed by November 10th, at which point we'll begin installing the permanent parklets. They happy to answer any questions you might have on this updated schedule.
I have a question. Are you magical?
I don't know.
How did that happen?
I don't know. You know, if we had asked the contractor to do so, it would have cost us a fortune. But the fact that he came to us and asked us for it, we were just so incredibly grateful that we were happy to make this happen, so yay.
Outstanding.
I'm just grateful that you're understanding that this is a significant change from the previous schedule and that you're willing to be flexible in that regard.
Most certainly. And I'm sure that if I receive any emails and calls about the noise overnight, I will tell them to simmer down.
Thank you.
In a nice way.
And because we understand that there are neighbors who could be impacted by the noise in the middle of the night, we've spoken to the contractor, and he has agreed to restrict the noisiest activities, including such things as sock cutting, to the hours between 8:00 and midnight.
Perfect.
So therefore, we will not have sock cutting going on at 2:00 AM. This updated schedule has been shared with the village business owners, along with my business card. And I've also attended the Village Business Owners Association to let them know that this has changed. And I'm getting the overwhelming response from them that they're actually quite happy about this shift in schedule.
You had said that since they're doing the work at night, that we wouldn't need to have detours, but more so just have two-way flagging?
Yes, that's the plan.
So will there be any construction workers working during the day, or will we just have a couple people flagging? Like, who's going to be doing the flagging if they're not working during the day?
The road will be open during the day.
Okay, so what does the flagging mean? Maybe I misunderstood.
Okay, so during the night.
Oh, nighttime, understood.
Yes, the crosswalks are being done during the night, at which point we will need to have flagged. So we'll do so flagged two-way during the evening hours. Sorry about that.
I just missed that little bit in my head.
No.
Thank you. This is wonderful. Thank you.
One last component that I would add is, we will be noticing and communicating with residents that live in close proximity to the village. We know that, just from past experience, in doing some night work, even like steam cleaning our sidewalks, that we've had some impacts to people's ability to sleep and go to work. And so we want to make sure that we reach out to all those folks. So we're going to do door hangers. Our engineering inspector is going to go and notice everyone and knock on doors and make as much contact as we can and let everybody know. So that's just one last piece to add to this. Thank you.
Thank you very much for that. All right, does that conclude the city manager's report?
Yes.
All right, then let's open up the public comment and see if anyone has questions or comments on the city manager communications. And seeing no one jumping up here, we'll check in with the city clerk.
If any members of the public would like to speak on this, please raise your hand. There are no raised hands and there are no written comments.
Okay, well, then we'll close public comment and we'll move on to city council reports. And I'm first here. So CJPIA has not met. Central Coast Blue did meet, and I neglected to print out the agenda, but the main issue was the making a rather, I don't know if significant is the right word, but a budget adjustment that did a better job of anticipating legal fees that we're going through. So that's essentially all we did at that particular meeting. So that's that one. So County Mayor's meeting, we met in Atascadero, and there was essentially no public speaker at this particular one. And the mayor's meeting, the mayors decided that we're going to do that every now and again. We haven't quite figured out how often, but it felt really good to just kind of sit there. We didn't have any speakers from the, we only have Deidre Molinax from the League of Cities. We did not have the usual assembly and congressional and state senate representatives there. And it really kind of streamlined the meeting and allowed us to really have some good conversation that really revolved around how we're all going to need to work together if we are going to do something about the California Business Roundtable proposal that is coming in another year. So that was where the majority of the conversation went. Then the South San Luis Obispo County Sanitation District did meet, and we, the essential, we got our wastewater treatment plant redundancy project update and extended a contract having to do with having an extended time for that. And the upshot of that was we got even more update on the concrete failure that's in the clarifier. And they are continuing to do, I've forgotten the actual technical word for it, but mixing up the exact concrete that they used at that time, which neglected to include a particular component. So they're curing that to determine whether or not it still stayed within tolerances. And basically, they're trying to figure out who's at fault. Is it an engineering issue, or is it the actual concrete issue? So it's going to take a little time to undo that. So that's where we're at on that. And then I also attended Zone 3 for Councilman Barnish, or excuse me, Mayor Proton Barnish, and there's a fair amount to report there. So the staff is expecting Lopez to spill again if there is an El Nino year, because we should be at 96.8% in December, if I have that number right. So well over 90% in December. So that will be interesting. And we are way ahead on budget, but because, for the same reason that we were way ahead of budget here, because they're not able to complete a few CIPs or capital improvement plans, so those have been slow to start, so that will actually get eaten up, though there will be some small level of money coming back to the cities. And then significantly, we had talked to our people about the algae blooms that were coming from Lopez Lake because of the warm weather and all the water and affecting the taste of water. And they explained a little further, which made total sense to me. It's not just the algae bloom, it's also that there is no state water coming right now. It's at 0%. And normally, like, I was joking when that got reported out here, saying it just tastes like summer. It always tastes like Lopez Lake in the summertime. But it is particularly strong, and the reason why is because it's not getting cut with the state water. It's not getting mixed with state water before it gets to us. So that's why it feels particularly strong this year, in addition to having a particularly high amount of algae, which is safe and there's no problems there. There was apparently an explosion at the Devil's Dam State Water Plant, and that's what caused that lack of deliveries. And they were clear to say that there will be over-deliveries of state water coming in the coming months to make up for the lack of state water here. Finally, and most significantly, although I voted no, the board in its wisdom decided to change the permanent time of those meetings. So it was changed from 6:30 PM to 10:30 AM. So I will no longer be able to serve as the alternate. I tried to make a concerted effort to let them know that sometimes council members have jobs. That fell upon very retired ears. So we'll kind of have to feel that out as we go forward. So just letting you know that that is a significant change. And that concludes my reports. So Mayor Proton Barnish is not here, so I'll turn it over to Councilmember Georgia.
Thank you. The Five Cities Fire Authority met in August, so we don't meet again until October, so no report out there. The Tourism Business Improvement District had a very exciting meeting. It was our inaugural meeting with our new board. Five wonderful representatives stepped forward and engaged and took interest and had great ideas. And I'm really looking forward to what this T-Bed Board does for our community, so super exciting. First meeting went well. They elected a new chair and a new vice chair. They reviewed the budget for the new fiscal year. They had an overview, because it was their first meeting, Visit SLOCal, and our marketing agency, Verden Marketing, both came in and gave a robust overview of everything that they've been doing, just so that our board members could be up to speed. Verden reported that we had the highest TOT revenue for fiscal year 2022, so that was really exciting.
Highest compared to what?
Ever.
Oh, compared to ourselves.
Yeah.
Okay.
Yeah.
I was thinking, who else did we beat?
We beat Pismo. We beat Pismo. All the metrics have increased, and they reported that the most interesting And they reported that the most interesting metrics is that Pinterest ads were performing extremely well, because during COVID, everyone was home and was doing a lot of DIY projects and took a renewed interest in Pinterest. And so Pinterest ads are performing extremely well. So there's that. They decided to have bimonthly meetings every Tuesday, on Tuesdays, the third week of the month. October, December, February, April, June, and August.
Who are the chairs?
Sean Dasman is the chair and my appointee, drawing a blank on her beautiful name.
Sarah Kunkel.
Thank you. Sarah Kunkel is the vice chair. And they both bring a lot of experience in the hospitality industry to the board. So very excited to have them both on there. Visit Slocal has not met, but they will have their annual destination summit this coming October 5th. And I believe all five of our appointed board members will be attending that, as well as Director Balkan. And those are my report outs.
Thank you. Councilmember Guthrie.
I'll start with IWMA. We passed another budget. Start with IWMA. We did pass another budget based on the reduction in fees that we experienced, so they had to redo our budget. We are close, maybe in fact, it's possible the county voted on it today to the letter of understanding of reentry into the organization. And following that, assuming it takes place, it seems like it will. Then when we figured out the costs, I suspect we'll be doing another budget, because there'll at least be somewhat of a reduction from that as well. So once all the costs are worked out, we'll adopt another new budget. At SLORTA, we should be seeing brand-new, smaller buses running on Route 27 and 28, to the ones that goes by the high school and then by Walmart. Those should, may already be, if they're not already on the street, they will be soon. They just fit a lot easier on that route. In fact, there may be some changes to the route in Grover Beach, because they could better serve some of the neighborhoods now that they're smaller. Ridership's still considerably down from pre-pandemic levels on all of the routes. There may be some changes coming. It's quite a ways out, but Santa Maria is interested in exploring taking over part or maybe even all of the Route 10 run. They have some numbers that say they can do it for less. We'll see if they hold up. But that's a year and a half away. But that's out there. Maybe some talk about that. On RAC, I'm going to wait until next month for my report on RAC. There was no, other than consent agenda, there's no actual reportable action. There was some discussion there. There's still kind of working its way through. It could be best if we wait until next month for that, when hopefully most of that's worked out. And then finally, I did do the League of Cities meeting. First off, there were no resolutions, so I didn't have to vote. I did stay, though. And I attended five of the, well, first off, there was the 125th anniversary. So there was a lot of stuff around that. And of course, as you mentioned, the Cal Business Roundtable. And the League's response was, I think, is ACA? At any rate, the alternative choice will be that if you pass a tax requirement that requires a two-thirds vote, then you have to have yours passed by two-thirds as well. So that's been something the League has been promoting. So in other words, if the Business Roundtable were to pass their deal that says it's a two-thirds vote for all taxes, then it would have to pass by two-thirds.
Oh.
And like I say, it'll be very interesting to see if they both pass, then we'll all be accorded.
Oh, that's interesting. Okay, you know. Dang, Mike.
Now you understand. Okay.
I do understand, because Dave talked about it, but I didn't quite, it didn't click until you said it. And the idea is one, they compete and cancel each other out. And the one that gains more votes is the one that succeeds, is the way Dave explained it.
That's what you would think, yeah.
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 Interesting. Didn't quite click it. Well, you should work for the lead of cities.
I don't know. Dave's pretty good. I will say, there are people who advocate really. I don't know if you guys sat in on any of their little seminars they've done the last few months. There's a lot of stuff going on that they work on. So I did, I'll just go real quick. I attended a deal on building in economically challenging times. Nothing really new there. Streamline the process. They did note that some larger cities, I doubt this would work for us, are talking about doing mixed-use projects where they take the first floor, maybe for a library or even for a city hall.
For a public facility?
For a public facility. And that has some possibilities of working to get something built that probably wouldn't get built otherwise. Takes the commercial component out of it, guaranteed tenant. And I went to one adopting Main Street for changing retail landscape. I see very little of this was about retail. Just one thing I'm learning, the titles seldom fit what actually takes place. But it was mostly a discussion about restoring or building new Main Streets. So I'm interested, the rep from Rancho Cordova, which has been working on this, actually got off on talking about having an umbrella. This is actually quite interesting that they've done. They have an umbrella nonprofit to sort of represent the city with all the other nonprofits. So if somebody wants to do something, instead of them coming directly to the city and saying, help us, they go to this nonprofit and they kind of vet the whole idea. And then the city works through that nonprofit. They've been very successful, a whole bunch of things, I'm sure, like recreation, some of those, where they've got nonprofits to take that over without having to manage them quite as much as we do, because this other nonprofit does it. So that we might think about for the whole Five Cities area. I don't think we're big enough to deal with that ourselves. I did attend hiring future leaders. There's two recruiters and a city manager. I'll say this is mostly felt like they were recruiting people. They were really talking to somebody who's trying to, how do we find new people? So wasn't as helpful as I would have liked. And then I will say the economic outlook for California was a very interesting one, one of the very last ones. I guess their message is that California economy is actually doing great, no matter what we think. And that it's being driven, certainly the AI side of it's driven, but there's actually a ton of manufacturing being built. And California manufacturing will be more than it's been since the 1960s in the next couple of years. And that was it. Yeah, didn't have to vote on anything.
All right, Councilmember Seacrest.
Thank you. So Air Pollution Control Board hasn't met. In fact, they're going to meet tomorrow and Councilwoman Guthrie is going to appear for me, because I have a court case I have to do. And thank you for that. So he'll give you a report next time. Regarding the South County Chamber of Commerce, they have actually a lot going on, and this is a very small little slice. I think everyone's aware of the South County Chamber's annual awards banquet and dinner is October 13th at Thousand Hills Ranch. They can do their big award for Business of the Year and Ambassador of the Year and more. And the chamber wanted to thank the city of Aurora Grande for its participation and support in the awards program and dinner. They are also working on the South County Visitors Guide for 2024. The idea is to redesign it in a more intuitive way for not just visitors to use it, but also folks that are new to town. The Rise and Shine Meetings are canceled for the rest of October, because they have a big situation going on. They're hosting a conference of over 250 folks from different churches. And that starts in nine days. And I'm not totally sure about all that, but they're excited. And there's going to be a lot of people in town visiting businesses and restaurants and things like that. So that's a small list. Thank you.
All right, well, that concludes the city council report outs. And that moves us toward item eight. This is community comments and suggestions. This is your chance to come talk to the council about items that are within your jurisdiction, but not on tonight's agenda. Please keep your comments to three minutes or less and address the council as one body. So if anyone would like to come up and speak on items that are not on tonight's agenda, please do so now. No, we are on item eight. Come on up.
Hello, my name is Tammy Paris and I live at 811 Wasna Road. I wanted to thank everyone for their support for the ADU's constructions in the community and for the recent workshops given with pre-approved plans, which have been helpful to me in getting started on the process in constructing an ADU unit for my mother. But I have run into a snag. I'm asking that the city council help me get going on this ASAP. I have sent all my paperwork in, my permit information, and I have hired a local AG contractor to do the work. My ADU unit is set to go in my front yard and I've had all my landmarks marked. My ADU unit is 625 square feet and is one of the pre-approved plans. I picked the pre-approved one, because I was told then that will save me some money. I am asking for the special exception or removal of a certain section of a code requiring that the rear placement, for the rear placement. I do seek, I do not see public value in restricting an ADU unit in the front yard where they can meet the new California ADU setbacks requirements and serve as a living quarters for elderly people and physically challenged. From curb to yard, 25-feet requirements. My ADU unit will be placed in my, placed in my neighbor's, will be placed like my neighbor's house a few doors down. I gave a photograph showing my neighbor's house, where it was from curb to their house is 23-feet requirement on theirs. My ADU unit will be placed like my neighbor's in a few yards down in relation to the street. The beautiful ADU will improve my front yard frontage in the neighborhood and not look diminished as it is now. It'd make a great improvement. I need to move my 79-year-old mom into the front yard of my property, so that I can care for her while she is walking with a walker. My sister-in-law is quadriplegic, and this would allow her front yard placement as well to visit. And then probably after my mom is no longer with us, my sister-in-law may be able to use the facility also, the ADU unit. My contractor is ready to go, so I need to get a pre-approved permit permitted and would like to be able to start construction. Thank you for helping me provide affordable, accessible housing. I appreciate your help in with the path forward for me to help others in trying to help me stand, afford, to meet with shared affordable housing goals. And I left my information for contact at the bottom.
Thank you, Tammy.
Thank you.
So at the end of public comment, don't go anywhere. At the end of public comment, I'm going to ask the community development director a few questions. So I'm going to get through public comments. So go ahead and have a seat, and then we'll go from there, okay? We're not allowed to deliberate here tonight, because it's not an agendized item, but we need some clarification from staff, okay? Would anyone else like to speak on items not on tonight's agenda? Okay, seeing no one else come forward, we'll check in with the city clerk.
Hey, if any members of the public on Zoom would like to make a comment, please raise your hand. And we do have Candace unmute. All right, Candace, you can unmute yourself.
Hi, can you hear me?
Yes.
Hi, thank you. Yes. Ladies and gentlemen of the city council, my name is Candace. I'm a resident of Aurora Grande residing on Sunset Drive. I appreciate the opportunity to address you today about the urgent issue of speeding on Sunset Drive. Since October 2021, we've been working to address this problem. But despite our efforts, the safety concerns persist. Sunset Drive, with its clear line of straight and unheated length, encourages drivers to exceed the 25 miles per hour speed limit set, you know, for our streets. Despite our community's shared concerns and a petition supporting traffic calming measures like speed bumps, there has been little progress since April 2022. Today, I'm here to request your swift action. We need to implement the proposed Golden State Measure, including speed bumps, to enhance safety on Sunset Drive. Our community has waited long enough, and our safety should not be delayed any further. The speed bumps symbolize our commitment to safety, protecting residents of all ages who use Sunset Drive daily. I urge the city council to prioritize this issue and work with us to make Sunset Drive safer for everyone. Thank you for your consideration, and let's take the first steps towards a safer Sunset Drive.
Okay, if any other members of the public would like to speak, please raise your hand. Okay, there are no other raised hands. And there are no written comments. And I do have a notice I want to read for the public regarding our public comment process going forward. Tonight will be the last meeting where any written comments received after 4:00 PM will be read into the record at the city council meeting. The option for written public comment was a courtesy implemented by the city during the COVID-19 pandemic and stay-at-home orders. Now that meetings have returned to in-person with an added convenience of virtual participation option, the city will be streamlining the public comment process as follows. Members of the public may provide public comment in-person at the city council meeting here in the chamber, provide public comment virtually via Zoom during the meeting, or submit written comments up until 4:00 PM on the day of the city council meeting. Written comments received after 4:00 PM will not be read into the record, but will be included as part of the city's administrative record. The city is pleased to be able to continue providing these various options for participating and providing comments. Thank you.
Thank you. So we have a couple of things. First of all, our community development director is here. So Mr. Pedrati, can you kind of get us up to speed on what's happening and what can happen for 811 Wasna?
And Mayor, I just wanted to note before Brian Gibson, just because ADUs consistent with state standards are approved ministerially. So an ADU application, a specific ADU application, wouldn't come before council unless it needed a discretionary entitlement that would come at a notice public hearing. So my guidance for advice would be to talk generally about our ADU process.
Okay.
So.
Generally, how's the ADU process going?
Brian Pedrati, Community Development Director. The ADU process is going good. We do have pre-design plans out there. We were able to get them updated to the 2022 building codes. We have a number that are in process in our office. I don't have the very specifics with 811 Wasna, but we will certainly talk with Tammy. I didn't catch her last name, but we will get with her and try to understand the situation. Pre-designed ADUs are intended to be on, sort of, well, as they're called, pre-designed, so that they can be put on lots. And sometimes there are different circumstances depending on the slope or setbacks. And staff can work with the applicant to make sure that they can still have a pre-designed ADU on their site.
Can I give you my copy of this that has her contact information? You can reach out to her. So Tammy, we'll have him reach out to you, give him a day or two. Thank you. And then with regard to the second caller, the city manager and used to be Public Works Director temporarily, I don't even know how we say that now. We've had so much discussion about Sunset. I don't remember where we are. And the last I seem to remember, Chief was here talking about it. But what's the situation there and what can be done?
So from my experience with it, we were looking at all types of measures. We looked at a speed survey. The speed survey data came back that there was no speeding on the street, although that's not the only thing we look at. We also found that there was a multifamily development, an older development that was on the street that had been replaced. We got some information back that that had helped the speeding issue as well. But this is something that seems to be regenerating. It's coming back to us, just like the caller reiterated. So we'll look at it again and see if there's the possibility of putting speed bumps. Speed bumps are a little bit difficult. There are some regulations that go along with them, the distance to driveways, the ability for fire to get through those quickly. So we can look at those again and meet with Candace and meet with the group and try to see if we can come up with a solution again. But again, it's something that was looked at for a while and then it seemed to die down. But we're willing to continue to work on it with them.
Can we, in the meantime, ask Chief to do some targeted? Can we, in the meantime, ask chief to do some targeted enforcement there and see if we can tamp that down while we start moving through the process?
Yeah, the last, we can do that, yes, definitely. We'll, we'll talk to the, to police chief and ask for enhanced enforcement there. And then the last piece of information would be that I know our city engineer is aware of the situation. We're working through a few similar scenarios like on Tally Ho that we're going to be talking about tonight, and we'll put this on our schedule and we'll, we'll take a look at it.
Sounds good. All right, so that concludes public comment and community items and suggestions. So that takes us forward to the consent agenda. So this is items collectively tonight, items 9A through 9G. So let's first check in with the council and see if anyone has questions or need to pull something for consideration or separate consideration. Okay, so no questions, none of that, so we'll go ahead and open up public comment. If anyone would like to speak on items 9A through 9G, please come forward now.
Good evening, Council Janet Nichols with the Five Cities Homeless Coalition. Simply want to thank you for your consideration this evening, for the partnership we have with the city. We've had some excellent communications recently with staff and are continuing conversations about how to improve homeless services here in the city for the city of Arroyo Grande. And other than that, I'm here for any questions. Thank you.
Thanks for all you do, as always, Janet. Anyone else? Okay, seeing no one else in chambers, we'll check in with city clerk again.
If any members of the public on Zoom would like to make a comment, please raise your hand. Okay, there are no raised hands, and there are no written comments.
All right, then we'll bring it back around to the council for discussion and possible action.
Mayor, I move that the council approve consent agenda items 9A through 9G.
Second.
We have a motion to second. Can we get a roll call, please?
Councilmember George?
Yes.
Councilmember Seacrest?
Yes.
Councilmember Guthrie?
Yes.
Mayor Ray Russum?
Yes. That quickly takes us to item 10A. This is consideration of introduction of an ordinance updating Chapter 3.08 of the city's municipal code, purchasing system, designate dollar thresholds for awarding contracts, and consider updated purchasing policies and procedures manual. And I see Director Valentine at the mic and at the staff table. I'll stall a little more and say it's been a beautiful day today, hasn't it? Glorious weather coming in October, the best month of the year in Arroyo Grande. Well, hello, Director Valentine.
Good evening, Mayor. Thank you for stopping. Okay. Good evening, Mayor and council members. I'm Nicole Valentine, the Administrative Services Director. Tonight, we will conduct a public hearing on the ordinance amending Arroyo Grande Municipal Code, Chapter 3.08 of Title III, to update the city's purchasing system. The adoption of this ordinance will take place at a future city council meeting. We will adopt a resolution designating dollar thresholds for awarding contracts and review a draft of the updated purchasing policies and procedure manual. It's my pleasure to introduce Pete Gonda from Baker Tilly. Pete has more than 20 years of experience in municipal government with an emphasis on analytics, budgeting, procurement, management, contracts, and performance measurements. Pete holds a professional procurement certification and served as purchasing officer for the city of Sunnyvale for nine years. Since joining Baker Tilly, Pete has assisted more than 20 jurisdictions in seven different states to improve their procurement functions. Pete has been a crucial advisor on this update for the city. Pete's on Zoom, and I believe there is a slight delay on his conversation. Is that correct, Jessica?
That's correct, so we'll just be hearing Pete from above.
Pete, whenever you're ready, begin, and I will advance the slides as you direct.
Thank you so much. Can you all hear me okay?
Yes, we can hear you.
All right, well, thank you for the introduction, Nicole, of mayor and council. It's great to be with you virtually this evening. Just have a few short slide deck for you. It hits the highlights from the policy, proposed policy updates and the staff report. The next slide covers just a bit of background here. The last time the city comprehensively updated its purchasing ordinance is going on 24 years now, and you know, things go out of date and may not incorporate changes in law that have occurred since the prior update. Best practices tend to evolve over time, and that is certainly the case here. And currently, the city has very, very low bidding and contract award threshold. It really impacts the efficiency and effectiveness of city operations. We'll get into a little more detail about that in a moment here. Next slide, please. So the next two slides cover, the first slide covers key additions to the purchasing ordinance, the items that did not previously appear, and the slide after that will cover updates to distinct provisions. But just quickly, we've added some pertinent definitions, established purchasing compliance oversight, and enumerated the purchasing responsibilities of department directors. There's provisions that have been added for amending contracts, making purchases with grant funding, disposing surplus property, defining conflicts of interest. Bid protest procedures based on best practices have been incorporated. The ordinance update provides flexibility for the city manager to update the administrative policies and procedures rather than having to bring those back to council each time an update is made. Unless such an update is required by law, then it would come back to the council, and a new requirement, or perhaps referenced here with the rate purchasing updates that you approved last year. In terms of major clarifications, there's been contract award authority and the dedication thereof has been clarified and specified, along with solicitation procedures for goods and services where there wasn't necessarily detail there previously. Requirements associated with emergency purchases have been, been a little better articulated. There's flexibility for awarded contracts to local businesses, and the bidding procedures for public projects have been updated. So just to dwell one moment here on the increases to bidding and contract award thresholds, exceedingly low in Arroyo Grande compared to best practice metric. And by that best practice metrics, I mean if you, if you look at, for example, the federal procurement standards, formal bidding starts at $250,000, whereas the city's formal bid threshold is $10,000, greater than $10,000. And that's, that's quite a disparity there. And also, the public works bidding procedures that the city follows under the California uniform guidelines are $200,000 for formal bidding, again, as compared to Arroyo Grande's $10,000. And that, that tends to result in administrative and operational efficiencies. More, more things have to go to council that take several weeks to prepare. We'll, we'll show you a timeline here in just a second, but what, what we did in, in terms of not only the application of best practices, we surveyed eight cities proximate to you, and, and we note that every jurisdiction that we surveyed has higher bidding and contract award thresholds than the city. 75% of the eight agencies have updated their policies within the last year, and then the remaining two were within the last five to six years, something along those lines. Next slide, please. So this, these are the differences in, in the bidding competitive thing thresholds for goods and services. You see the, the line for goods and general services. I'm, I'll just key in on formal thresholds now because we just talked about that. For goods and general services, your current threshold for formal bidding is $10,000, and we would propose to increase that to 15, $50,000. For professional services, you require a formal solicitation if that purchase is greater than $25,000. And just for consistency purposes, we're recommending $50,000. The next slide shows the recommendation for awarding contracts after, after a solicitation. And again, key in on formal, you'll see under city council, currently contracts greater than $10,000 for goods and general services require council approval, and professional services greater than $25,000. So we would propose increasing those thresholds, up to 50 for department heads, up to $200,000 for the city manager, and anything greater than $100,000 would come to council. The next slide is just illustrative of using that $10,000 example, and these are, of course, just estimated timelines, but you'd see here on the, on the top line of the bar chart, if, if you had to go out and do a formal bid for a $10,000 and $1 general services contract, there's going to be a scope of work preparation, there's the solicitation process, evaluating the submittals, negotiating contract, preparing the staff report, and then executing it. It's preparing the staff report, really, that, and then executing the contract following that, that takes up a lot of the time here. What, what also takes up time is preparing scope. When, when you have to go out and formally bid something, you typically have to be a little more detailed than scope versus doing something informally where you wouldn't necessarily need to be as detailed. So you can see by the charts here that you, you'd be saving a considerable amount of time to be able to do something a little more informal that's consistent with policy, what other person in your area are doing, and certainly consistent with best practice. So just a note on the procedures for public projects, the city does follow the California Uniform Construction Cost Accounting Act, or CUPCA, for public works construction. The bid thresholds for CUPCA are actually set by the state and are announced in the public contract code. For public projects, no bids are required for projects up to $60,000. Informal bids are required once you hit 60 and up, or greater than 60 up to 200, and then that formal bidding requirement kicks in at 200,000. These thresholds, as well as the formal threshold for federal procurement that I referenced earlier, are periodically indexed, though these, the $200,000 limit has not been indexed in, in several years now, and that, and that may happen in the near future. So in terms of recommended changes for, for public projects, certainly, we would, we would propose that the city syncs with those indexed limits as they change at the state level. Interestingly, there's a provision in the public contract code that allows this council to delegate to a public works director or a city engineer the ability to approve the plans and specs for a public project. Right now, those, the plans and specs come to council for approval prior to the issuance of a formal bid, but the city manager awards the contract at the end of the day. What we would propose in that, the council, the CUPCA allows the authority to approve the plans and specs to be delegated, thusly to staff, we would actually recommend that, but also recommend that the award of the contract comes before council. And, and we recommend that because it's, it, it could result in greater transparency and, and consistency. If, if you're, let's say you approve the plans and specs for a project that was estimated to be $200,000, but the bids came in a little bit higher than that, and there was a budget in place, that, that wouldn't necessarily come back to the council for the awareness that the, the actual contract was higher than what it was estimated. For that reason, we would recommend that staff approve the plans and specs, but council approve the, the actual contract. This is the end of, of the slide deck here. I'm certainly happy to entertain questions if you have them.
Thank you. We'll check in with council and see if we do. Councilmember Seacrest, any questions?
No.
Councilmember George?
Thank you.
Councilmember Guthrie?
Yeah, I'll just ask one here real quick and apologize for not asking this in advance. On the, the CUPCA item, so does that mean that if they change, if they change the guidelines for, for those, those amounts, that will automatically turn, it's kind of like when we use the uniform building code?
That is correct, yes.
Okay, I just wanted to clarify that.
I mean, it goes through an assembly bill process, so it is pretty stringent at the state level, but yes.
Thank you.
All right, I don't have any questions either. Thank you so much, and let's go ahead and open up public comment, see if anyone has comments on item 10A.
This is more of a clarification question. If you could go back a couple of slides.
Go ahead and ask your question, and then we'll, we'll discuss it that way.
So he had mentioned that he was bringing our recommendations in sync, but the, but the chart he had displayed was saying no bids until 50,000, but the slide had said that state says no bids until 60,000. So are we, how does that discrepancy work, or what information is missing to close that gap?
Okay, great, we'll ask that question.
I'd be happy to.
Hang on just one second, we'll go ahead and finish out public comment, and then we'll gather them all up for you, okay? So seeing no one else in chambers, we'll go ahead and check in online. If any members of the public online would like to make a comment, please raise your There are no raised hands, and there are no written comments. All right, great, so we'll close public comment and go ahead and answer the question then.
The $60,000 requirement for not having to obtain bids applies only to public projects. That, what, what the state law says around this is if, if your public project is going to cost up to $60,000, you may negotiate a construction contract directly with a contractor, you need not obtain multiple bids, or you could perform the work by what's called force account, or you perform it with your own forces or your own employees. That's the, the CUPCA requirement for public projects. That's going to be different from the bid threshold requirement for goods, commodity goods, office supplies and the like, and general and professional services. Those would be the key distinctions. And those, and the bid thresholds for goods and services are set quite a bit lower than the $60,000 CUPCA threshold as, as proposed.
Thank you very much. Okay, so we'll close public comment, bring us back to the council, and let's see where the council's at on this. This time, I'll start to my left.
So, you know, maybe people often comment on it takes government forever to do simple little things, and I, I think we see kind of an example of, of that here, of why that happens. I have to admit, I don't, I don't remember seeing a lot of contracts between $30,000 and $50,000, but I, I do know that the ability of staff to do what a normal business would do, which is simply to, to go out and, and take care of business, is restricted by these, these kinds of things. So I'm certainly in favor of what we're doing here, and I think it'll help staff a lot with, with getting a lot more throughput, not having to put up with us every time.
Councilmember George?
I'm ready to move forward, thank you.
Councilmember Seacrest?
Thank you, I'm ready to move forward as well. I know this has been an issue, and it's, it seems like it's going to just give the staff more leeway to move forward more quickly. Thank you.
And our consent agenda item will likely, the items get much, much shorter in the coming agendas, so that'll be nice for both staff and council. So, and, and I just wanted to comment too, when we give that authority to our city engineer or to other professionals within the organization, they're the ones writing the staff report that we rely upon anyway. So it doesn't really change the outcome there. We are not professionals, and we rely on you in, in the first place. So would someone like to make a motion?
Well, we could try. So, so the first one is to introduce ordinance. So I'll move in, an ordinance of the mayor and the city council of the city of Arroyo Grande, California, amending Chapter 3.08 of the city of Arroyo Grande Municipal Code relating to purchasing.
I'll second that.
All right, let's go ahead and take that separately. All right, let's go ahead and take that separately. Councilmember George?
Yes.
Councilmember Guthrie?
Yes.
Councilmember Seacrest?
Yes.
Mayor Ray Russum?
Yes, and we can take the rest as one item, right? Okay.
And I move a resolution of the city council of the City of Aurora Grande authorizing levels of purchasing authority. And do I have to read everything else?
Just keep on going. We'll just package it.
Okay. Well, the rest is like, we reviewed the draft of the updated. I think that's the only resolution that we have.
Yep, and I think, Councilmember George, I think it's correct, move the resolution forward and otherwise. Just to note, the resolution is tied to the approval of the ordinance for consistency, so you can move the resolution and actually approve it tonight, and then it will take effect after the second reading of the ordinance becomes effective.
So my motion, staff.
Yeah, what he said.
Do we have a second?
Yes, second.
All right, let's go ahead and get a roll call for that as well. Councilmember George?
Yes.
Councilmember Guthrie?
Yes.
Councilmember Seacrest?
Yes.
Mayor Ray Russum?
Yes.
All right, so items 11, we have none tonight, so that takes us to item 12, new business. And item 12A is the consideration of introducing tally-ho road speed limit reduction ordinance. And I don't see, okay, it's not Mr. Khan tonight?
That's correct, yes.
Okay.
Steve Khan is out, and our city engineer has actually been working on these projects, so it's very appropriate that she's going to be presenting tonight. Thank you.
Perfect.
Good evening, mayor, council.
Welcome, Ms. Weenie.
So this is a recommendation that city council waived the first reading and introduced for reading by title-only ordinance authorizing a speed limit reduction on tally-ho road between James Way and Highway 227 from 35 miles per hour to 30 miles per hour. And I'm going to tackle this staff report in a different order than it's presented because the setting of speed limits can be a little bit on the tricky side. So I'm going to start with a little primer on how speed limits get set first, before I describe the background that took place prior to this recommendation. And to start with, there are some documents that are put together by Caltrans that tell how to set speed limits. And speed limits are typically set, if there are speed limits posted at all, at what is called the 85th percentile. And what that is, is you take a speed survey, and the 85th percentile of free-flowing traffic is what you typically set your speed survey at. In this case, we did a speed survey back in July of '23 and found that that 85th percentile was 36 miles per hour, rounded to the nearest zero or five, in this case, 35 miles per hour. That happens to be the speed limit that is posted at this point now. Now, you are allowed to consider a speed limit reduction below the 85th percentile if an engineering and traffic study that is performed by a registered civil or traffic engineer determines that there are factors involved that allow that speed limit to be dropped by five miles per hour from the 35, in this case, would be 30 miles per hour. There are certain factors that are listed that can be considered when deciding whether or not that speed limit can be dropped. You can consider things such as road characteristics, such as, is there blind turns, is there a rise there that doesn't allow you to see traffic coming? There's something called the pace speed, which is the 10 mile per hour segment of speed in which most of the cars are going. There are factors such as roadside development or environment, things that are occurring on the side of the road that might dictate a slower speed as warranted, parking practices, pedestrian activity, and reported crash experience for at least a 12-month period. There is also the option of not having any speed posted at all. You get something called a prima facie. Did I pronounce that correctly? I don't speak Italian. I don't speak Italian either. I don't speak Latin, but it's on its face, or the default speed. If you don't see any speeds limits set in a residential area, then the prima facie speed is 25 miles per hour. But in this case, you would have to take all the speed limit signs down, and then you'd have to hope that everybody just knows that the speed limit's 25 in the area. And given the fact that at 35, people are speeding, I don't think taking the signs down is actually going to accomplish what you're looking for. So there's quite a big background associated with this. We had some complaints from residents regarding speed, and so a speed survey was originally done back in February of 2021. Back in the day, the 85th percentile was 41 miles per hour. Set it to the close zero or five, and you end up with an 85th percentile speed of 40. So the 35 mile per hour speed limit that was set, based on that original speed survey, was actually appropriate and following the guidance. Although that was the lowest postable enforceable speed allowed at that time, we continued to get concerns from residents regarding safety. And so there were some meetings that were held with the residents, and one was held in September '21, the other one in May of '22. In response to that, a street restriping plan, I think it's called a road diet, was put together, and that road diet was put into place in winter of 2022. That road diet was actually quite effective because the 85th percentile speed dropped from the '21 survey of 41 miles per hour to the 36 miles per hour in the July of '23. That gives us the ability to consider 30 miles per hour, which is a speed that was not able to be considered as a result of the prior speed survey. So I happen to be a registered civil engineer, so I was able to do an engineering and traffic study, and I evaluated the conditions that exist. And although there are no road characteristics on this section of road that suggest that there should be any lower speed limit, the pace speed, which is that 10 mile per hour increment of speed containing the largest number of vehicles, in this case, is 27 to 36. So what that means is 30 and 35 are both within that pace speed, so that helps to support the recommendation of having a speed limit of 30 miles per hour. In this case, you know, the documentation that exists has a definition for residence district for highways of a certain number of houses along that highway. Although this isn't a highway, it has more than enough houses there that it would dictate it being a residential district. So I took that into consideration. In addition, there are a lot of flag lots. So there are residences that are tucked behind, and the only thing that's facing the street is a driveway, so it's a little misleading to a driver just how many residents exist. In addition, there is a school bus stop in that location, so it does have pedestrian activity that does warrant a lower speed. We also looked at collision history, although there were no collisions reported to date this year, there were two collisions in 2022. Anecdotally, many residents shared near miss accidents, excessive speeds, and being hit by vehicles due to speeding. As a result, I feel comfortable recommending a speed of 30 miles per hour. But, you know, it's one thing for me to make that recommendation, and for us to have a couple of residents who say that they have some concerns. I wanted to make sure that everybody agreed with me. So I sent out a postcard to all 42 residents who live on tally-ho. It was 42 residents. We got amazing response. Before this was written, we got 12 responses. Since then, we got three additional responses. The overwhelming response was support for 30 miles per hour. Out of the 15 we received, 12 said 30, and three said 35. Eight of those 12 that said 30 also wanted 25, but you can see based on the assessment that the only way to achieve 25 at this time is to have no speed limit sign at all. As a result, I feel comfortable presenting to you a recommendation for a speed limit drop to 30 miles per hour on this section. Happy to answer any questions.
Thank you. Let's see if there are questions. Any questions? Councilmember Seacrest?
Yes, just briefly, that neighborhood is right behind me, and I, a lot of people are going to be pleased, I think, with what you have done. So, sorry, the question is, could you explain just a little bit more about how the pace calculation works?
Certainly. So that's part of the speed study. So there is a significant amount of data that is collected when we lay out those markers for conducting a speed survey. And the pace speed, and I had to read it several times to try to fully grasp it, it's a little confusing, and it's the 10 mile per hour or 10 mile per hour span of speeds in which the greatest number of cars have traveled. In this case, it happens to be 25 miles or 27 miles per hour to 36 miles per hour. So they looked at 26 to 35, they look at 28 to 30. So they did all of those groupings, and then each one of those groupings, they counted how many cars went in that grouping of speed. The span of 10 miles per hour that had the greatest number of cars was from 27 to 36.
Thank you.
Interesting. Councilmember Guthrie, any questions? And Nor, do I have any questions? So let's open up public comment. If you would like to comment on this item, come on up.
Nancy Macy, 344 tally-ho road. I appreciate you being willing to put the signs up to lower the speed limit. This is a citizen's business, but on tally-ho road, it's very, very old business. It goes back a long, 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 long time, trying to get some respect for the residents of tally-ho road. We'll have the new signs, which is great, but without it being patrolled or monitored, nothing's going to change. You know, we've lost our parking, the other system was supposed to, with road dieting, is that what you called it? Yes. Yeah, that was supposed to help, but it didn't. We still have the speed limit. We now no longer have parking on both sides of the street, and we have two bike lanes. But we still have the problem with speed, so I appreciate you considering this and at least putting up the new signs, and maybe it'll help. But without it being patrolled, it's not going to happen. We just don't ever have police on that street. So thank you. Thank you for your work and your research.
Thank you.
If I may make a note that this is the first reading of an ordinance, that there will be a second reading and also 30 days prior to it being implemented. So the signs will not go up tomorrow. They have to go through the process.
Thank you. Would anyone else like to speak? Come on up.
I'm Terri Boe. I live at 234 tally-ho road, which I happen to have a different perspective than a lot of people because I'm right at the bottom of James Way. So cars are stopping while they're supposed to be stopping. Of course, they don't always stop. The police presence would probably improve that situation. But what I know about tally-ho road, I've been there 35 years, and I've watched a lot of changes, is that when you talk about the residents and what the residents need or what, you know, because there's, yeah, school bus drops off and picks up in the morning, they drop off in the afternoon, it stops traffic right in front of my house, right where James Way hits it. This bus comes down and turns the corner and stops right there. What I'm saying, trying to say, is I'm trying to give you a picture of this changing, this evolving road where what it looks like in the morning when people are going to work, they're coming down Corbett Canyon or down Carpenter Canyon, turning down tally-ho road, it's kind of a straight shot, and that's, people don't even, they don't, they're not aware, they're not, they're not taking any caution that there's lots of houses on both sides. It's just a straight shot to get to James Way, to go up James Way and on wherever they go. So I've seen that just happen. I did, I do have that bike lane right in front of my house, which, yeah, nobody really pays attention to it, frankly. I mean, it's just not that obvious. It's not that, it's, people are, they're commuting, they're coming this way, and they're going that way. They're coming down this way, and they're going that way. So when the kids are off to school in the morning, the parents are driving their kids to school in the morning, it's busy. And then all day long, it's quiet as you could play football in the street. It's just peaceful and quiet, and there's not, although there could be that occasional car that's hauling tail, because they can, because again, it just gives you this straight shot, and then there's that great big oak tree, and the road narrows, and then you have to kind of like maneuver, and so, you know, just be careful, and then they hit a stop sign. I don't want to get anybody busted, but it is not uncommon for somebody who is just, does not live in the neighborhood, who does not, who isn't thinking about the people that live in the neighborhood, who just...
And if you could just wrap up your comment, please.
They're coming around that corner and not even slowing down for the stop sign. We see a lot of that. I mean, like, kids love to go, you know, spin around the corner. So all I'm saying is what everybody else just said. So if it's 30 miles an hour, I think that would be not that big of a deal, you know, a difference for the residents or for the users of tally-ho road, but I think it would be a step in the right direction for caution, and for the whole day is different.
Thank you very much.
From morning to evening. Thank you.
Anybody else? All right, let's check in with the city clerk. If any members of the public online would like to speak, please raise your hand. Callers, please press star nine. Okay, there are no raised hands, and there are no written comments. All right, so we'll close public comment, bring us back to the council for discussion and possible action. Any comments?
So, yeah, I agree that this is old business. When I was on my previous council, I think probably saw this four or five times, and also, we haven't, I haven't heard from Wasner lately, but Wasner was constantly on the list. So I do, like I did, that we actually see some of these comming measures do have some effect, maybe not enough effect. It'll be interesting to see how, once we actually finish the bump out there on the other side, if that slows people down. But I realize that's the other piece of tally-ho. But it's true, enforcement's going to, especially at certain times, to at least have people thinking about it. We do have two motor cops again, so I think I would expect we would see some enforcement now that it's worthwhile. But as I say, it's been ongoing problem for a long time, so I'm glad to see some progress.
Councilmember Seacrest?
Thank you. So I heard from residents just last week in regards to some real concerns about some pretty crazy speeding all up and down tally-ho, and then shooting out onto Corbett Canyon late at night. So I actually heard something similar the other night myself. Somebody was just going like fully, like through the city, come back around down Corbett Canyon. So my question is, is there a possibility of getting some possible more patrols or enforcement during some of these times?
Sure, there's a possibility. I think that it's difficult to nail down the times, but we can speak with the neighborhood and talk about, you know, when those busy times are, when they're seeing speeding, and we can have some enhanced patrol there. But in the middle of the night, sometimes it's very difficult to pin those down, but we can begin to work on those points with the neighborhood.
Thank you. And other than that, I just wanted to say, it seems, you know, great job, a lot of very detail work, and I'm glad to see it, you know, as the speaker said, I'm glad to see it at least inching down. I feel like we're, it seems like there's some progress being made, so thank you.
Councilmember George?
Thank you. Well, I support staff's recommendation to reduce the speed to 30, especially since staff made such a clear and educated argument as to why. And I think I appreciated that most. Shannon, thank you for breaking everything down and addressing each and every item as to why it was justified to reduce the speed. That was very helpful, and I hope that was helpful to the public as well. I definitely don't support the idea of removing the street signs and hoping that people go 25, because I don't think that's going to happen. No, I also appreciate the reaching out to the residents and having that resident engagement. I think that's very important, and obviously, they appreciated it too because they responded. So thank you for that. That's something that our council always talks about. How do we engage the public? How do we engage the public? And for you to have taken that extra step was really important, so thank you.
Thank you, and I'll add that, you know, I've passed councils, I've dealt with this as well, and I remember going down to 40.
as well, and I remember going down to forty. So, and, and doing speed studies can be really dangerous in terms of being careful what you wish for. You're going to get an outcome that you don't want. And while sometime, there's no way we can ever get rid of speeding. That's just, it's not a thing. But we have data that's showing that those prevailing speeds are lessening. So what we're doing is working, and it takes a really long time to do. And so I'm very pleased with that. And I also am pleased with the care that you took to read that into the record, which is what makes this enforceable. So that's not just for us and the public, that is for the courts, and that is for the ability of our police officers to be able to enforce a thirty mile an hour speed limit. So with that, I am in total support, and let's, let's see if we can get this rolling.
All right, well, I will, Mayor, move an ordinance of the City Council of the City of Arroyo Grande approving the reduction in speed limit on Tally Ho Road between James Way and Highway two twenty-seven from thirty-five miles per hour to thirty miles per hour.
I'll second it.
All right, we have a motion to second. Any discussion? And it's an ordinance. Can we get a roll call, please?
Councilmember George?
Yes.
Councilmember Guthrie?
Yes.
Councilmember Seacrest?
Yes.
Mayor Bayressum?
Yes. Item twelve B is discussion of SLOCOG's supplemental funding efforts, and I'm guessing this isn't going to be Mr. Khan either.
Good evening again. This was in response to a request that was made by Councilman Guthrie for some information regarding San Luis Obispo Council of Governments, also known as SLOCOG's, current efforts to secure some supplemental funding for transportation needs, and to provide information to Councilman Guthrie, who is our SLOCOG representative. So for just a little bit of background, twenty-five of fifty-eight counties in California are considered to be self-help counties. And what that means is that they have a sales tax measure in place in order to be able to help fund their transportation improvements for their communities. In your staff report on page two, you will see a graphic that shows those counties that are self-help sales tax, the ones that are in orange, and the ones that aren't are in blue. We are surrounded both north and south by self-help counties, so, including Santa Barbara County. There is a number placed in each one of those counties that is a self-help county that shows their annual amount that they bring in. I happen to know SB CAG's director, and I called and said, so how about that thirty-eight million? He says it's actually up to fifty million per year these days. So the dollar values in the, in the figure represent the annual revenue received by each county, but as you can see, those figures are a little outdated. I mean, two thousand sixteen, San Luis Obispo County did try placing a sales tax measure on the ballot, it's called Measure J, that would have established such a sales tax. The measure received sixty-six point three percent voter support. It needed sixty-six point seven to pass. Had it passed, it would have generated approximately twenty-five million dollars a year back in two thousand sixteen, which would have escalated to a thirty-five million dollars per year currently to address transportation issues, including road maintenance. In addition, self-help counties are eligible for other funding in competitive state grants if you have matching funds. And by not having those matching funds, because we don't have such a measure, it means that we're not as, as competitive for those grants. So SLOCOG has put together an investment plan and looking at elements towards helping fund that investment plan, including a local sales tax. They're thinking of putting a sales tax measure on the November twenty twenty-four ballot, but in order to do so, they're trying to gauge the, the public. They've created a website, I invite everybody to go visit it at www.localsroadsfirst.com. There's a survey there to take, there's some background information, they've put together a logo as well. SLOCOG has been holding meetings with stakeholders, so local advisory council, trying to raise awareness, but they're also trying to get a sense of whether or not such a sales tax measure might have some legs for the twenty twenty-four ballot. Part of the issue is that San Luis Obispo County has three point one billion dollars available in revenue, but five point four billion in identified transportation needs. This leaves a gap of two point three billion dollars over the next twenty-three years. Some of our streams for funding transportation issues are shrinking over time because they're associated with use of gas. So when you have conservation, hybrids, and electric vehicles, you're seeing a decline in that funding. Deferring maintenance on roads leads to considerably more cost in road maintenance. When you don't stay on top of it, road maintenance costs more. When you can stay on top of it, it costs a fraction of the cost of rehabilitating roads that have already deteriorated. So getting on that road work in a timely manner actually saves a lot of money. Also, money that isn't put into rehabilitate streets can also be put into other transportation needs, such as sidewalk repairs, public transportation, and ADA improvements. So SLOCOG is looking for input, the website again, www.localsroadsfirst.com. Take a survey and provide information to the county on your feelings on this issue. The SLOCOG Board of Directors will be meeting in October to discuss the potential of the sales tax measure, and Councilmember Guthrie is our representative on the board and is looking for feedback.
Thank you very much. So I'll ask Councilmember Guthrie, do you have anything to add to that for the council to consider?
Let me just, so what prompted this? I believe you guys were copied on the email. In fact, I'll point out that Mr. Worthy from SLOCOG is here. If you do, in the end, have some questions, we may allow him to come up and answer them. And remembering when this came through last time, and I don't know if you were on council when...
In sixteen, I was on.
Okay. So when this came up last time, it was a really, what I'm looking for feedback is primarily on what kinds of road projects we would be interested in, in spending this money on, because at least in the last one, it had to be included in the description for the, for the initiative. So last time, it was a pretty obvious choice. We had Briscoe Road as a, and it was pretty obvious that that would be what we, what we would spend the money on. Kind of interesting to wonder what would have happened if it had passed, and then we didn't do it. But this time, I don't think it's so obvious, that there is, there's no big project out there that I can think of. I do know we have some smaller projects, we have sometime in the future, we have a, we're at least thinking about a, a overpass on the south end of town. So those are the kinds of possibilities. It's also possible that we could direct it directly to street maintenance, which, you know, with, you know, spoiler alert, would be my preference. But I did want to give the council the opportunity to provide feedback, you know, specifically on the items and, and how, how, how you think we should proceed. I'd been voting for this up until now, because we have not actually gone forward with ours. And I know we can't discuss it specifically, but I have been voting to move this process forward. So those are, basically, what I'm looking for is general feedback on, on this initiative that I can carry back to SLOCOG Board Wednesday.
Let's see if we have questions, then we'll go to public comment, and then we'll give feedback. So any questions of either Councilmember Guthrie or of Ms. Sweeney?
My question was, sorry, can we use it for street maintenance?
Yes, in fact, I believe Ms. Sweeney, when she was at Guadalupe, was very successful. They had eighty-plus roads, indexed eighty-plus roads, based on using the funds that, that North Santa Barbara County generates. San Maria spent it, I think primarily on freeway, but Guadalupe spent it on road repair and has great roads.
So, so can you expand on that? I'm sorry, just, it's leaning that gets me. How, how often can we get the money for street repairs? Is it a project, like, do we get a large chunk where we go through the entire city and just take care of all our roads at once, and then we're good for a long time? Or is it just...
That's, I suspect there's multiple ways of doing it, but bonding, I think what you're referring to could be bonding.
I'm giving him the subtle nod.
We welcome you to the podium.
Thank you. James Worthley, planning director for SLOCOG. Great job by staff in the presentation and the staff report. It's not easy to lay it all out there, and she did a wonderful job. I want to correct a couple of things, though. There is no October item on the SLOCOG Board for this. Working with our consultants, we found that we need to postpone things a little bit. So the earliest we might be back to SLOCOG Board would be December. Before we'd have any draft investment plan, it would be the beginning of the year or into two thousand twenty-four. What could it be used for? It can be used for roads and potholes, absolutely. It could be used for safe routes to school, or overpasses, or highways, or major roads, or downtowns, sidewalks, or transit, or senior transportation. Highway one oh one fixes. So there's a long list of what it can be used for. In terms of road maintenance, because that seems to be where we gravitated to, that all gets figured out within the investment plan. So a formula based on something would be developed to identify specifically what would come to Arroyo Grande and the other seven, six cities, as well as the unincorporated county, if not some of the unincorporated communities directly. That formula then says, this is what you're going to get on average every year. After that, it comes down to, well, how do we set up the expenditure, not the expenditure plan, more of a capital improvement program? So with an approved measure, you say, well, how are we going to spend this? We know where the dollars go explicitly, and that you can't change that. Our board won't be able to say, no, 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 it's all going to go to slow now. That's not allowed. It's explicit a promise to the voters, and once it's set, that's where it goes. Then the question is, how quickly can it come to, let's say, Arroyo Grande? Some cities have a strong need for road maintenance, and their pavement conditions are falling and falling and falling, and with that, there could be a front load of their twenty-year money to happen sooner. There is an option, we've not poked around this, because you don't have to do it until you get to the capital improvement program, to bond for the money upfront, do more work upfront, because the longer you wait to fix the roads, the more they cost. And right now, I know that, I think it was a year or two ago, where are we, Arroyo Grande, was it a fifty-three pavement conditions index? That's what I had in my long-range plan, is that still current? Four years ago, in the long-range regional transportation plan, we had Arroyo Grande at sixty-nine.
Yep.
I don't know how you go down sixteen points in four years, that's difficult, but...
Oh, no, it's easy, my friend.
It's proven. It's now proven. So, yeah, it can absolutely be used for road maintenance. It could absolutely be fronted sooner rather than later, but that comes after, is there an approval, is everything approved first?
So we would, we would present with you with a program for street repairs and whatever dire need that is, or when that need is, and you would determine within those twenty years when you would allocate those funds to the city?
That's basically it. I think, to clarify a little bit, and go back, process would be, there's, there's so many ifs between now and a possible vote. If the SLOCOG Board keeps moving it forward, if we have a draft investment plan at the SLOCOG Board, and it's moved forward, we'd come back to the city council, we'd work with city manager, we'd work with your staff and say, what's wrong in this? We're going to work with them ahead of time. We're going to look at the public's input and your input in our website, localsroadsfirst.com. What is most wanted? Now, whether or not that input lands in the next regional transportation plan four years from now, or in a measure, we'll figure that out when we get to a draft investment plan, if we get to a draft investment plan. If that draft investment plan makes it through all the cities and the county board of supervisors, we would go back to the SLOCOG Board and say, here's what we heard, here's the changes that were asked for. What do you think of this? The SLOCOG Board then, if they move it forward, would send it back to the cities and say, okay, we made adjustments. What do you think? At that point in time, you tell us what you think. And then it goes back to the board of supervisors, then it goes back to SLOCOG Board, then it goes back to board supervisors, then it goes back to the voters if we're lucky. So there's so many ifs between now and then. Right now, the phase we're in is outreach and engagement. We need to get in front of more groups, especially in the South County. We're not getting the groups asking us for presentations, and there's a lot of questions, there's a lot of misinformation out there already. We're happy to clear it up. And then we get to the point of a vote by the voters, and if we get more than we got last time, at sixty-six point three percent, hopefully at sixty-six point seven, then we talk about, okay, where's the money go first? The highway projects take the longest to develop, they're a decade out. That means there's money that would be set aside for the highway for road maintenance earlier, because they can go past.
So that formula that, that you would use to calculate how much Arroyo Grande gets, who, who creates that formula?
Staff, SLOCOG staff will start with that formula, we will run it through the city managers, we'll massage that formula, we'll run it through the SLOCOG Board, we'll massage that formula, and we'll land on something. The clearest thing, the easiest thing, the simplest thing is usually the best. If it's understandable by the voters, that's usually better than, here's a super complicated mechanism, counts at three, four, five different things, and comes up with a percentage for Arroyo Grande, or do you say, here's one thing that everybody can totally understand, and that makes the most sense?
Right, because at the end of the day, Arroyo Grande voters are going to want to know if they're paying that tax, how much of it...
Are they getting their fair share back?
Right, exactly.
Absolutely. And that's exactly what we can do, is, is make it a fair share that's coming back. And, and every community is the same way. We want our fair share.
Okay, wonderful. Those were my questions. Thank you so much.
Happy to.
And I want to, don't go anywhere.
Okay.
I only see one metric that gets us there. So can you give us a, a list of simple things that we could tell the voters, should we move forward with that, about how you could determine that?
To split up the, the dollars. Population is pretty much the simplest.
The first one I see, but I don't see number, I don't even see number two and three. What are they?
I have heard folks say, well, let's base it on jobs, let's base it on new housing or population coming, let's base it on sales tax collected, let's base it on the road maintenance needs, or the miles of roads that we have. You throw all those things in, what you've done is confused everybody, to the point of, I don't know if I'm getting my fair share or not. But those are all things that I've heard, that we can...
Okay.
...run the numbers with and, and showcase to city managers and bring back, and say, here's what we landed on.
Thank you. Maybe don't go anywhere.
Yeah, I'm sorry, I do actually have a question. So last time it came through, I'm remembering the formula was a sixty-forty split, that sixty went to, went to cities for whatever, in our case, it was Briscoe, whatever part of Briscoe that was going to add up to, and forty went to the regional projects.
You're really, really close, great memory. We did a fifty-five percent to the locals.
Oh, okay.
Forty-five percent to everything else. I think Briscoe was in a regional highway pot, however, not on Arroyo Grande's back also, so you would have, and this is where regional measures really went out. You put, if you put all your money, and I want you to hear this very clearly, if you put all your money on road maintenance, you'll get one dollar to spend for every one dollar collected. You can't leverage that against state funds and say, look, we're doing road maintenance. Santa Cruz, last year, they offered up thirty million dollars in their measure of funds, and they captured in grant funds a hundred and fifteen million dollars for bicycle and pedestrian improvements. They're going to put on the ground in the next three years, a hundred and forty-five million dollars, and you know what? They can do it two or three more times with that same, with new monies that are coming in, and leverage another hundred, two hundred, three hundred million dollars out of the state, because they have higher dollars to offer as match to leverage the dollars back out of the state. Fifty-five, forty-five. So forty-five percent then got broken into regional highway-type projects, active transportation, public transportation, which included senior transportation, veterans, disabled, et cetera. In the fifty-five percent, though, we did carve out, we had hoped to carve out, and I think it ended up landing in the local choice decision, a million a year, so four percent for safe routes to school improvements. There's a need for them out there. We'd hope to carve it out and say, look, this is a million dollars a year going for safe routes to school improvements. Safe routes to school can leverage three, four, or ten times the amount of money out of the state for those type of projects in the right locations. We're losing out on that, that state pot, and that's the biggest thing. So road maintenance is great, but it's one to one dollar. Active transportation, highway improvement sometimes, transit improvements, and safe routes to school can leverage three, four, ten times the money back. And we've seen it time and time again.
Okay. All right, I think that concludes our questions, but I'm going to take a guess that you want to make a public comment. So if you would like to take your three minutes, I don't know if you have anything to add to what you just said, or let that stand, and we'll listen to the rest of the public.
I think you, I've hit... I think you, I've hit just about everything I was looking at. You're right. The gas tax functioned great from the nineteen fifties through two thousand. In two thousand and one, we saw the advent of hybrids and more and more hybrids means less gasoline purchased, less gas tax collected. Then we had work from home. Again, hurts the gas tax. Then we have electric vehicles. Electric vehicles pay nothing to the gas tax. This is a problem to fund our street and road purposes because it's funded with gas tax funds. It's broken and it's not going to get better. Question is, do we want to fix it now or fix it five or ten years from now when everything costs even more? That's where we are. And please go to localroadsfirst.com and share your, and the public, please share your information with us because that tells us what you want. Thanks.
Thank you. Anyone else for public comment on this? I'm looking at two of you. All right. Seeing no one here, let's check in with the city clerk.
If any members of the public online would like to make a comment, please raise your hand. Okay, there are no raised hands and there are no written comments.
All right. Then we'll go ahead and close public comment and bring this back to the council for commentary and I don't know if guidance is the right word, but Councilmember George, you want to go first?
Well, there's a lot I want to say that I won't say, but I will say the concept of maximizing our dollars by matching funds and getting more money from the state is definitely a, obviously it's beneficial to us. I, I'm struggling because, like I said, there's a lot I want to say that I can't say. I, I think that because the timeline to move forward has been pushed back, I think that that gives us a little more time before we have to really give you a decision on, on making, making a decision one way or the other. So I think at this time, I, my recommendation for you would be to continue to move forward and yeah, just move forward with the process. That would be my recommendation. Is that what you're looking for? Are you looking for?
Don't forget your mic.
I was really looking for more of the general direction of how you would want to see these funds, these funds spent, which I think would affect some of my decision on how we would move forward.
Oh, okay. Well, initially I, I definitely thought roads because we, like you said, we don't really have a major project unless council wants to talk about Briscoe again, which I don't think that council at this time does. So initially I was thinking roads, but I, I, I hear what you're saying about roads are one to one, but we could get bikes and trails and, and really, and I like that. I like that idea of being able to, I, I think that's something that we have a, I'm really stumbling on my words tonight because this is something that I-
Do you want to move?
No, 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 I'm good. No. The, we have a bike trail plan that we haven't fully been able to bring to fruition. And if we can get funds to kind of work towards that, I think that I've seen a lot more electric bikes on the road. So I think improving our bike lanes and bike trails wouldn't necessarily be a bad idea. So I would be in support of using funds for that. Roads would be number one, just because with our current funding, we, we would need help. But I would be open to some other options as well. Does that help? Okay.
Councilmember Seacrest, can you think of anything to add to that list?
Not, not much to, no, nothing to add. I think the roads are just so important as we know. We, we need so many repairs and so much maintenance here. So I guess it's a question of how much would we actually get for roads? I mean, the bike lanes are important as well, but I mean, we have a very big issue with the roads. So anything that can go towards maintenance, I think would be a help.
For me, the first thing that comes to mind is the lack of investment of the county in the Halcyon Corridor and that that is an ongoing problem that gets dumped into the city and has relatively no support in terms of upgrading that corridor. So, or alternatives to getting, getting some of that Mesa traffic moving to other points of entry onto Highway 101. And in terms, so that's number one for me is the Halcyon Corridor and-
And by Halcyon, are you, are you thinking of the bridge?
I'm literally thinking of the moment they enter city limits at, at Highway one through Highway 101 and all that traffic that dumps off the Mesa and comes up Halcyon.
Okay.
And so I don't know, some of that is improving the corridor, but some of that is diverting that, that traffic and that I don't know what the, the answer is to that. But I do know that some of the answer to that has to do with El Campo because the closure of El Campo and the other entry points between Traffic Way and Los Barros have rerouted traffic also.
So, so a regional project that, that would provide additional access to 101 from the Mesa?
Exactly.
Okay.
Because I do think that, that directly benefits the city of Arroyo Grande.
Okay.
Because anything that's going to reduce that, that thorough fair traffic on Halcyon is going to address problems that we continually address. So that, that's number one. Number two for me would be a, a look at El Campo because that's our sphere of influence. That is the future of the city. And without some sort of solution that's going to be on that side of town, even if it's not within city limits, it's a chicken or egg argument. So without some sort of view towards what we can do down there, it, it, it limits what we might be able to do in terms of expanding the city or doing, bringing more head of household jobs or more development to that part of the city. So I think that's a piece of it. I have concerns that we don't have, what we need is road money, but the, the carrot here for me, I'm not super supportive of this, as you well know, but the carrot for me is the leveraged funds, but there's not a whole lot of places for us to put those leveraged funds. So there's not a lot of impetus for me to say, you know, yay, let's do this. So I'd kind of like to hear from you as well, since we have this agenda as of where you think that money can go. You're the one who's looking at that programmed money every four years and seeing what's the, what the competing projects look like and what the chances of us even getting a piece of that into the South County look like.
Well, I, I guess I would look at some of the, some of the other projects. For instance, two twenty-seven repairs out there that I know they're going to do the one, the one traffic circle. In other words, things that will improve our connection to San Luis Obispo actually helped, helped our residents quite a bit. They do have the Pismo Corridor improvement, but that's supposedly funded. But when it gets here, I suspect it'll need more money because they always do. And, and like you say, the two twenty-seven. So those two items going north would, would also be things that I would consider on a, on a regional basis. I, I still see our taking care of what we got is more important than building something new. And this might not be the best way to do that. I think I can go there. So-
Isaac said didn't explode, so I think we're good.
Can I, can I piggyback off of this conversation and ask you about, because you were talking about the solution for El Campo. So the Traffic Way overpass was also something that had been discussed a while back and-
It's in our circulation plan.
Yeah. So is that, would that be something that these monies could fund and would they even be close to funding it?
Absolutely. It's, it's the only one I think actually mentioned, that, that particular project is the only one that's mentioned in, in the discussion so far.
So that's just, that's the carrot that they're dangling?
Right. And that's similar to El Campo.
Right.
And, and it's really similar to the Halcyon Corridor.
But see, that's why I go back, that's why I go back to the roads because the whole point of the Halcyon Corridor and when they closed El Campo is all that traffic now goes through valley and into the city and all of our roads get trashed because anyways.
Well, we do, we do have five gas stations that collect a few dollars, I'll just say.
Just a few though, diminishing as we heard. So I guess my, my question to you is, when we put that circulation plan together and I wasn't super excited about the Traffic Way overpass, because my concern is that Caltrans won't build anything within one mile of, of an, of a on-ramp and that would negate El Campo. So what does that kind of do in terms of pushing access?
I'm not sure it's a, a mile.
I remember that from back when I was supervisor and we were talking about doing something in South Nopomo and that, am I right?
Yeah.
Yeah, okay. And so it, it-
Okay.
That's a thing. So I'm concerned about that.
I'm just saying it's in our circulation element that I think you guys ultimately adapt, adopted. I did it from planning commission. So it is in there and it is mentioned in the SlowCog. And there is no El Campo mentioned in there that I am familiar with.
Or it's unconstrained.
Yeah, so.
All right. Do you have what you need at this point?
Yeah, I think I have as much as I can get.
And, and for those of you viewing at home and wondering why we all look like we ate a canary, it's because we were reminded of the limits upon which we can speak with regard to future actions of the council. So we are being quite careful to not step where we shall not tread. So we're trying really hard to choose our words and not get in trouble by our city attorney who's sitting over there smiling because he ate the canary and so, okay. So I think we're good with item twelve B. And that takes us to item thirteen, council communications. And I'm going to guess for sure you've got something. Okay, I'll take yours. And any other council communications? That, exactly.
So everybody get ready for the Harvest Festival. Sorry. I've only been doing it all week, so it's drained out of my brain. But yeah, so everyone ready for the Harvest Festival? It's looking better than ever. We do have over a hundred vendors coming, twice as many as last year. We need dog races are coming back, diaper derby's coming back. And we have really focused on having kids games on Friday night because that was a major comment. So we have a bunch of the nonprofits have committed to that. We have, we'll, we'll have the tricycles out in a much larger area. And so it's going to, it's going to be fun. It's going to be, going to be a lot of really good things going on. So I, I hope everybody will show up. Parades at ten, starts at ten. Probably over by eleven thirty and that's, that's when the rest of the festival really kicks off. And so we'll hope to see everybody there.
And we've got a float, right?
Of course we do.
Yes.
Are we bringing back confetti eggs?
I'm not sure I'm going to be-
Yeah, why don't we bring confetti eggs back?
Bring confetti eggs back.
But that was supposed to be a surprise. So yes, confetti eggs are coming back.
Yes. My childhood is back.
Yes.
All right. Thank you. All right. So adding to the Harvest Festival thing, two things. First of all, city manager Robeson and I will be attending the Celebration of Life tomorrow for Mayor Martin and I will be presenting them with the proclamation from the city that includes a lot of really nice things about what he's done over his career and three lines just personally from me. So I'm very excited about doing that tomorrow. So we'll be doing that. And I want to make sure to, I guess, I should probably share this across all of you so that you can share it on your social media. I have an, a boosted post running on my Facebook and Instagram for Arroyo Grande Day at Cal Poly on October seventh. And that will be super fun. There's a whole bunch of staff going. There's a whole bunch of people from Arroyo Grande going. And anyone who uses the QR code and lives in Arroyo Grande gets in for free. So that is also on this little piece of paper that none of you can read. It is versus Idaho and kickoff's at five o'clock. So join us there. Very much looking forward to it. So with that, if there's any other, not any other communications?
What is the time of the normal rail?
It is five thirty, right?
Yes.
Five thirty at the city gazebo. Yes. Right. Any other council communications? All right. Then that takes us to adjournment. We'll see you in a couple of weeks, everyone.